...into an agreement, and I'm not sure what the price tag of that agreement is. And it's, I guess it's up to this body to decide if you have concerns about that. If you don't have concerns about that, then obviously you can stand up and say yes. I have some concerns about that, because I read an article in the, from the Woburn Daily Chronicle, and the Woburn Council supported this agreement, and they, they talked about a 10% surcharge. They talked, they, they approved that, they approved that the town of Wilmington would have to go into an, an agreement to open up the Woburn Street Bridge, a written agreement, and that the town, they would have to give a notice to the town of Wilmington of seven day notice, and then shut us off if they had problems within their system. I have concerns about that. I don't know if they'll be ironed out with the board, I don't know how the board feels about that. I just found out about it yesterday, and I was very disappointed to find this out yesterday, the day before town meeting, and then have this article. So in interest of being able to move forward and allow town council to be able to negotiate with Olin and with the city of Woburn, I'll, I'll vote in favor of it, but I have to make this body aware and the residents aware that it could mean a cost to you, and, and it's not really covered in this article, and I'm concerned about that. I will do my best to bring forward any information and to persuade my board members to come forward with any information, and maybe it needs to come back to town meeting, and maybe the town manager can, can explain to us if it will, if it's going to cost as far as a 10% surcharge to enter into an agreement with Woburn for MWRA water. MWRA water is expensive enough, then to have to pay a 10% surcharge on top of that, as the city of Woburn voted eight to nothing, I believe it was Thursday night, and it was in the Friday paper. Thank you.
Mr., just for clarification, Mr. Wood, if you could, the, the surcharge has come up a, a couple of times, just if you could clarify what the agreement is.
Yes, I'd like to address that. I think there's some confusion on what we're talking about here. This agreement before us tonight is to allow Wilmington to build a pipeline through the city streets of Woburn and to give permission to the selectmen to sign this agreement. The agreement that Suzanne spoke to and other folks tonight, I believe Representative Maselli, is an agreement to purchase water this summer, so that we do have enough water to meet the demands for 2006. There is talk of a surcharge and that the ability to shut us off if they have an emergency in their town.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anyone that, that hasn't spoken on, on the issue yet? Okay, I'm gonna go Mrs. Deck.
I, yes, I'd like to ask the town manager, why is the word eminent domain in this here article? Those real estate interests. I was wondering, are you proposing taking anyone's property, or, or is the city of Woburn doing it?
No, we're not. It's standard language that's prepared by town council to cover any eventuality, but any kind, if, if there needed to be an eminent domain, it would have to do with, with simply an easement. So we're, we're really going, we've, we've had positive discussions with all of the property owners.
Oh, okay.
And there, there shouldn't be a problem. And just to, Mr. Moderator, if I may, just to clarify further what, what Mike is saying, again, the agreement that was signed by the, or that was authorized by the Woburn City Council the other day is the same agreement, essentially, that we've had with Woburn for the last several years. There's a new administration, and this particular mayor wanted it to be essentially endorsed or ratified by, by his city council. In Burlington, for example, they, they sent us back a letter of agreement. So it's, uh, it depends upon the community as to which activity they, they take in terms of executing that agreement. Regardless of what the charge is for the water, the bill is handed to Olin, and Olin pays the bill.
Pays the bill.
The town of Wilmington does not pay for any purchase of outside water, and has not paid for any purchase of outside water since this issue is, since what, 2002 or '03, 2003?
Oh, thank you. I'm supportive of the article, I just didn't want to see any landowner. So, thank you.
Mr. Banda?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Okay, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. We're voting to end debate. May give the maker of the motion up to 10 minutes if he should so choose. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Voted. Mr. Kyra was the maker of the motion, if you should so choose.
I, I think that all has been said that needs to be said. I would urge you to, to give us the opportunity to provide for potable water source in an emergency and vote favorably on this particular article. Thank you.
This requires a two-thirds, try a voice vote first. All those in favor of Article 22, as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously.
Mr. Stewart? Moderator?
Mr. McDonald.
I'd like to bring this up for reconsideration.
Okay, and you voted, obviously, in the prevailing side, since it was unanimous. Hold on a second. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion's made and seconded. Discussion, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Quite frankly, if the town didn't have to pay any money for this project, why is there language requesting a transfer from available funds? The other concerns I have, I'd like to get some, answer to some questions. Maybe Mr. Woods can answer if Woburn has any wells online that get mixed in with their MWRA water. They do?
The question, Mr. Woods, is the, the water that we would be buying through this agreement from MWRA, is there water from the Woburn public supply that's mixed with that water, I think is the question.
The agreement that the people have voted on this evening...
This article.
...is strictly MWRA.
Strictly MWRA water.
That's correct, from Bob and Russell.
Thank you.
So, how can we be sure that there are no interconnections? It doesn't make sense that Woburn has two separate systems. I don't really trust that, and they've made movies about Woburn, about people dying because of cancer, because of contaminants in their water. I think you people are making a huge mistake if you vote for this. What I would suggest to do is vote against it and compel the manager to go to Olin, take this money, and combine it with, say, state money, and buy the Sherrappa property for future well development. You're making a huge mistake, and quite frankly, I don't believe Olin is going to pay the entire bill. It sounds like they're gonna be paying for four and a half million dollars. What happens if they hit ledge? What happens if the construction costs go up? You people, trust me, are gonna get hammered. Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
Just to make it clear, that, that an article, as folks know, gives a broad overview of what could be offered, but the specific motion that I offered did not ask to take any money from available funds. The article does give that, give that notice, but the specific motion, which the moderator has, said that the management board of selectmen hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain such title interest, including fear or lesser interest. So we're not, we're not looking to do anything in terms of specifically going after available funds. We're looking to acquire the money for this process as a gift, and that arrangement has been worked out with Olin.
Further discussion? Anyone who hasn't spoken? Yes, sir.
Yes, I had a question, Richard Grinder from 451 Middlesex. A number of years ago, there was a water plan put out, and in that it stated that the town would be expected to pay roughly $5 million just to get into MWRA. The pipeline that you're setting up now, that we just voted on, that'd be nice, we'll have a connection to MWRA, but if we need to turn this on, who will pay the, the entry fee? I understand that's gone from $5 million up to $8 million. Is it expected that Olin is going to agree to carry our water, so to speak, for the rest of the foreseeable future? Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
And I'll also rely with your permission, Mr. Moderator, and Mr. Woods, but the, the entry fee, as you've referred to, has to do with, with becoming a permanent member of the MWRA. If the town is going to go in that direction, this body has to vote to do that. Certainly, our intention would be to go after Olin or any, any responsible party that, that we deem is responsible for having created the problems in our well fields, but Mr. Woods can add to that if he thinks he needs to.
Mr. Woods?
I believe that article addresses the question.
Thank you. Mr. Forrest?
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
We've had just three speakers, Mr. Forrest. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I had done earlier on this, and, was that, on, on the... Yes, he did. Yes, he, he got a second from the gentleman back there in the baseball hat. Yes, yeah. So further discussion, I'm going to allow to be consistent with my previous decision, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Quite frankly, if no money is gonna be needed from this town, this language should be taken out of here, and if Olin is gonna pay for it, this should be language specific to that put into this article, so we don't get hammered again. Say, oops, we didn't put it in there. Now Olin doesn't want to pay for it. Would Mr. Kyra be willing to eliminate this language and put in the language that specifically says, "Olin will pay for it"?
Mr. Kyra?
Uh, no. This, what this article does is it, it authorizes the board of selectmen to enter into a municipal agreement. The intermunicipal agreement will be between us and the town of Woburn. The agreement to pay for the construction of the pipeline is between the town of Wilmington and Olin. I can assure you that the board of selectmen is only going to support an intermunicipal agreement with Woburn if they're satisfied with the arrangement with Olin. So putting that into this article would not really have any force of law. The article was constructed with the assistance of the town council, and it enables the town of Wilmington, through its board of selectmen, Water and Sewer Commission, and town manager, to enter into an agreement to establish this emergency pipeline, and that's, that's the only intent of this. Beyond that is where you have your agreement with Olin, that'll be formalized by this group, with officials from Olin to construct the pipeline itself.
Well, what I'm hearing is it will be formalized. There's nothing in writing now, there's nothing concrete. They could walk away from this, and these people are gonna be stuck with this, and I think everybody knows here that the selectmen, in past years, have acted contrary to the will of the people.
We actually have an, we actually have an agreement...
Hold on, Mr. McDonald has the floor. One second, Mr. Kyra.
The, the selectmen have acted contrary to the will of the people, and I would urge everybody here today, don't rely on the selectmen, don't rely on Olin here. If this was, if this was gonna be set in concrete, there should be some specific language that compels them to have to act according to the will of the people in a responsible way, and we continue to be hammered in taxes, driving elderly people out of this town, and I'm nervous about the fact that Woburn still has wells on their system, and we haven't seen any plans of their water, water system here. So I don't, I don't trust that any of their water isn't being mixed in with the MWRA. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense that if their hydrants and all of that are interconnected, that we can be assured of that, and quite frankly, there could be residual of chemicals that have been causing deaths in that town. So I, I hope you vote against this.
Mr. Goggan?
I'm gonna move the question.
Okay, I, I don't see anybody else looking to speak at this point, so maybe we can accomplish two goals with, at the same time here. There's no, anybody else that was interested in speaking? Seeing no one, let's take the vote.
I'll withdraw then.
Great, thank you. We're on Article Number 22, Mr. McDonald's motion to reconsider Article 22. If you want to reconsider and bring the vote back to the floor, as the main motion, you should vote yes. If you're happy with the unanimous vote that took place a minute ago, you should vote no. Those in favor of reconsidering Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Defeated, thank you. We're on Article Number 19. To see if the town will vote in accordance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter 40, Section 4A, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with one or more other governmental units for the purpose of providing public health services pursuant to the authority of the Board of Health, in accordance with an intermunicipal mutual aid agreement to be entered into between the town and various government units, or take any other action related thereto, Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Moderator, I move that in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 40, 4A, the town, the town manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and upon recommendation of the Board of Health be hereby authorized to enter into an intermunicipal agreement for a term of 25 years or less with one or more governmental units for the purposes of providing, for the purpose of providing public health services.
So your motion just includes the term of 25 years or less, which is different than the booklet?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, approval, discussion. Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Moderator, this has been recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health that all cities and towns in the Commonwealth pass an article such as this, so that they can then make intermunicipal agreements with neighboring towns to do effectively what police and fire units do, and that is to be able to respond across the borders of towns into other towns that request services.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. Mr. Durencis is walking this way, I assume. Mr. Durencis points out that the, there is a, a second change in, in the motion that gives the town manager with approval of the Board of Selectmen and upon the recommendation of the Board of Health, as opposed to just the authorization of the Board of Health, I apologize. Okay? Further discussion? Ready for the vote? Those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. To see if the town will vote, to, to see if the town will vote, to see if the town will vote, to amend the Wilmington zoning map and the associated zoning bylaws of the town of Wilmington by voting to rezone Residence 20 to Residence 10, and amend the delineation of the zoning boundary for the following parcels of land located at 2830, 32, 34, 36, and 38 Glen Road, and describe parcels of land as listed on the assessors' records as map 66, Parcels 20, 21, 21A, 22, 23, and 24. To make these parcels conforming to the area requirements for these parcels, or do anything in relation thereto, is there a motion? Ms. Holland?
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as is contained in the booklet.
It is in the booklet, thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, is approval, planning board recommendation, is approval, discussion, Ms. Holland?
Very briefly, Suzanne, first of all, I want to thank everyone that's still here at this late hour. I appreciate your service to the town by participating in this process. Very simply, I live at 28 Glen Road, and I would like to rezone my property, which is a fully conforming R20 lot that's divided as an R10/R20 lot, along with five other parcels, which are my neighbors' lots, that are zoned R20 presently, but they do not conform at all to the zoning regulations in lot size or frontage for an R20 zone, and basically move the R10 line to the back of our lots. Right now, presently, if you look at the map, the R10 line goes down the middle of Glen Road, and I'm just moving it to the back of our property. That's all.
Further discussion? Representative Maselli?
I was in the public hearing. Question I have is, by doing this, how many lots are you creating? And how big are they?
On my property, I would possibly be creating one other lot. I have 200 feet of frontage, I would need 100 feet of frontage for each lot. At an R10 zone, one lot would be at least R10, maybe, or 15,000 square feet, the other would be about 30,000 square feet.
And all of these lots have frontage on Glen Road?
Yes, both lots would have frontage in Glen Road.
So if I follow you, in essence, all you're doing is creating one more lot that exists right now.
Well, it'd be subdivided from a 40,000, 45,000 square foot lot, would be my property, yes, one lot.
So, how many lots do you end up with?
Two.
Two, period.
Two, period.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Usually someone gets up when they're doing that and says, you know, I've got a kid who's gonna move into the house, or what have you.
Combination, combination. My life circumstances have changed recently. I'm a single parent now, my son is 21. I'm not sure whether I'm going to actually subdivide the lot and build a smaller place for myself, sell the bigger house, or keep the bigger house and sell the lot to finance my lot, yard cleanup. The property's too big for me.
Mrs. Deck?
Did you say you have a 5,000 square feet lot?
No, I do not. I have a 48,000 square foot lot that's an R10/R20 zone right now.
Okay, so when you do receive the R10, what is the frontage for an R10?
R10 has to have 100 feet of frontage, R20 has to have 125 feet of frontage.
Okay, now what about the 5,000 square feet?
I don't have 5,000 square feet.
Oh, I misunderstood you. I thought you said...
I would make a lot of 10 to 15,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage, and the other lot would be about 30, 35,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage.
Well, all I can say is good for you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This requires a two-thirds, we'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 37 as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. I drew Article 36, which was the article that we had taken up, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Castellano, they asked me to take them up 35 and 36 contingently, so just to show you 36 was in the bowl. We've already acted on that. We're on Article Number 27.
I move that the town...
One second, Mrs. Hooper, I need to read it for us, one, one second, thank you.
Article 27, "To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of
the town of Wilmington revised as follows," proposed changes are in italics. "Chapter 2 Town Meetings. Section 1, the annual town meeting for the election of town officers shall be held on the fourth Saturday in April of each year. Section 2, no change. Section 3, all matters to be considered under the warrant for the annual town meeting, except the election and determination of such matters as are required by law to be elected or determined by ballot, shall be considered at the adjournment of such meeting to be held at 10:30 a.m. on the Saturday following the election of town officers in the year for which the warrant is drawn. The warrant for every annual town meeting shall contain a statement by which the meeting is adjourned to such time for such purpose, or take any other action related thereto." Mrs. Hooper.
I move that the town vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised as follows.
And Mrs. Hooper, does your motion contain, uh, read as is in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion is seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, is approval, discussion, Ms. Hooper.
The intent of this article is to move the date of the annual town meeting to one week later, so that the town meeting will never fall during school vacation week. Many families go away during this week, and I often hear people bemoan the fact that they'd like to be present at town meeting but can't be, because this is an opportunity for them to vacation with their families when their children have the week off. The election of the town officers may still come during school vacation week, but people can vote by absentee ballot before they go away, so it should not affect the results of the election. Unfortunately, we cannot vote on any of the town meeting warrant articles by absentee ballot, so moving the date of the town week, town meeting to the week after the school vacation should make it possible for many more people to attend and participate. I have researched through 2018 what the town meeting dates would be if we passed this warrant article. Some years, the town meeting would fall on the fifth Saturday of April, if there are five Saturdays, and on other years, it would be the first Saturday in May. More than 30 people signed my petition when I only needed 10, and when I asked them to sign, I did not get a single negative reaction. In fact, the common reaction was it was a great idea, we should have done it long ago. I hope everyone who agrees on this warrant article will agree.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Segal?
As a, as a parent of school-aged children, I, I will definitely vote in favor of this article.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes, with all due respect to Barbara, but I talked to many of the mothers that are not here today, and they had no intention of being here today. They're home with their children, and I can remember when my three little girls were growing up, I had no intention of spending eight, nine, 10 hours and leaving them. So most of the time, we don't attend. In fact, most of the people on my street, a lot of them are older, too, they're out doing yard work today. They had no intention of attending the town meeting. So if it's passed, it's passed, and if it's not, it's not, but let's tell it like it is. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Could I speak on that?
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Yeah, um, yes, ma'am, and then here, yeah.
Joan Grady, 24 Sheridan Road, I would like to speak in favor of this. I teach in the public schools, and while it is true that many people who have children would not be here, they either have babysitting issues or sports issues, there are still many who would be here, but because of the constraints of school vacation, and sometimes you don't, during a busy vacation, we get travel plans that necessarily would allow you to get back in time. I think it would open the democratic process to more people who might choose to be here, and I would support this.
Anne Rich, Allen Park Drive, I am in support of this, but my quest, comment is, the woman who said babysitting issues, when my children were little, we always came to town meeting, and the Girl Scouts, or, or, someone from, girls from the ju, the intermediate schools or the high school would be in there providing babysitting services for the children of the attendees at the town meeting. Don't they do that any longer? If they don't, they should. There should be some group looking for civic, um, community service activities who would be willing to babysit the children of the attendees at town meeting.
A challenge for our community service leaders in Wilmington. Yes? Mr. Ayako?
First, I'd like to say that I'm in support of changing the, uh, date out a little bit. It might give a little bit more participation in the town meeting, um, but a couple hundred more, maybe? You still have the issue that you have to be, you have to be here... You still have the issue that you have to be, you have to be here eight, nine, ten hours, as this lady over here alluded to. I think it goes further than just changing out a week. I mean, that starts the process. I think there's other changes that have to be made with the format of the town meeting and its duration, maybe split it up into two days. I don't know. But just by putting the date out is not going to get twenty-three thousand people to participate.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have one thing to say. Look around. I don't think it can hurt.
Further discussion? Mr. Grogan?
I think one other advantage, too, is it could push the time of the meeting past, obviously, things like Passover and Easter are variable, and having it a little later in April, I'm not sure how exactly the formula works, but be less of a chance, like we did with the town election, of having it in the middle of Easter weekend. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? Mrs. Hooper?
If I really had my brothers, I would have liked to have made it a weekday night, but I knew that wouldn't pass.
Okay, we're ready for the vote. Voting on Article number twenty-seven as presented by Mrs. Hooper. Those in favor of Article twenty-seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number thirty-three. Which is on page thirty-seven. "To see if the town will vote to authorize a selectmen to enter into an agreement, the terms of which shall be determined by the selectmen to sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcels, following a determination made by the town manager that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose, and in accordance with Chapter three, section sixteen of the Bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised, and any other applicable law. Parcel located on Everett Avenue, described in the assessor's records as map fifty-five, parcel eighty-three, or take any action related thereto." Is there a motion? Mr. Little?
Yes, Robert Little, fifteen Everett Ave. I'd like to pull the article at this time.
You're going to withdraw?
Withdraw.
You want to withdraw it?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to withdraw. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion? Okay, those in favor of withdrawing Article thirty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number thirty-two. "To see if the town will vote to remove certain restrictions as contained in the two deeds from the town of Wilmington to Forest and Dame dated December fifteenth, nineteen eighty, and recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds at book two four six seven, page four fifty-two, and date May twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-three, and recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds as book two zero seven two, page two eighty, and to further all the town to establish a price relative to the removal of said restrictions. The above referenced properties are more particularly described as follows. The land as bounded, as you can see on Skigliano and Agunkwit and Blackstone Streets, containing ten thousand square feet, being shown as lots forty-two, forty-three, ninety, and ninety-one on a plan entitled Plan of Lots at Central Park, Wilmington, Mass., April nineteen oh eight, scale eighty feet to an inch, James Adams Civil Engineer, Old South Building, Boston, Mass., which plan is recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds at Plan Book twenty-five, page thirty-nine. Parcel two, a certain parcel of land on the Westerly side of Hanover Road being shown as lots fifty, ninety-four through ninety-nine inclusive, on Plan of Lots in Wilmington, Mass., dated April nineteen oh eight, James Adams Civil Engineer, which plan is recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds at Plan Book twenty-five, page thirty-nine, together bounded and described as follows, on Hanover Street and together containing fifteen thousand square feet, more or less. Be all measurements, more or less, or however otherwise bounded and described on said plan. The above referenced parcels, one and two, are a portion of lots eighty-four and eighty-five as shown on the Town of Wilmington Assessor's map fifty, or take any, any other action related thereto." Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Moderator. Attorney Robert Peterson, three fourteen Main Street, for the petition is the estate of Forest Dame. And, Mr. Moderator, I would move to see if the town will vote to remove certain restrictions as contained in two deeds from the town of Wilmington. In the rest of the article, Mr. Moderator, is exactly as it appears in the booklet.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Approval Planning Board recommendation. Is approval Town Manager Declaration of Surplus on the restriction? Is yes. And, Mr. Moynihan, the fair market value that you have determined the restrictions to be worth? The lifting of the restrictions, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Assessors has determined the fair market value for the release of these restrictions to be a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred.
One, one eighty-nine, Mr. Moynihan, or one ninety-eight? One ninety-eight, one hundred. One hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred. Mr. Peterson, will you accept that as you made motion?
Yes, I will, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Moderator, the Dame property on Skigliano's, actually, it's on Blackstone Street, contains fifty thousand square feet of land. It's located in an R twenty zone. Currently contains an auto repair business, which Mr. Dame operated on the property for over fifty years. He passed away in July. That property can be subdivided into two conforming lots of twenty-five thousand square feet each in an R twenty zone. Each lot would have, be fully conforming for the dimensional requirements and the setback requirements for that zone. The reason this article is here is a portion of that property was obtained by Mr. Dame back in the early eighties from the town of Wilmington, and it contained certain deed restrictions, which in order to be lifted, the town has determined those to be a running interest in land. In order for those deeds, restrictions to be lifted, two things must happen. The town must declare the land surplus, and the assessor must establish a fair market price for that. And as you already heard, the town manager has declared this property to be surplus, and the value as established by Mr. Moynihan is acceptable to the petitioner.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? Mrs. Deck?
This here is an interesting article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. A hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to-
One ninety-eight.
One-
Hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred.
To relieve them of what restrictions? And who owns this? Does the town own the property, or does this Mr. Dame own the property?
Mr. Carroll?
The town doesn't own the property, but the town established a restriction, so the town owns a restriction essentially on the, on the property. When, when they bought the property from the town, bought two pieces of property from the town on two different occasions many, many years ago, the town sold them the property with the restriction saying that they could not build on it. And so it's been, it's been the position that the, the town has taken, at least that I've taken since I got here in nineteen ninety, is that the town should not be a land bank. Many times, the town would have done that, and then the petitioner would have come back and asked the town to remove the restriction after having given them the land at a very, very low price because it was restricted, and we stopped, we stopped that practice. As Mr. Peterson has indicated, he, apparently, the, the owners believe that the established price is fair. They can build one lot right now. However, if, if we agree to remove the deed, they can build a second lot. And for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand and one hundred dollars coming to the town of Wilmington, I think it makes sense to remove the deed and to have the town under the benefit of that, of that revenue.
Okay, so what you're saying then, basically, is the town does not own this land. You sold this land to this individual years ago?
I think nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty. Were those the two dates?
Yeah, there are two separate deeds, Mr. Moderator, and the rationale behind the town's position that they maintain an interest in the land, if may answer Mrs. Deck's question, is that Mr. Dame purchased those parcels from the town of Wilmington at the time on both of them for less than its fair market value. Therefore, the town's position is, if you now want to make use of that parcel separate from your contiguous parcel, then we want to establish what we consider to be today's fair market value to do that. And I have discussed that matter with Mr. Moynihan, although I may not agree a hundred percent with how we value the property. I think the, the process for how it was done and the figure that, that he arrived at is fair. And if the petitioners want to make use of their property, which will be a fully conforming lot, they're going to have to pay that price. And they're aware of that.
Oh, okay. The petitioners are aware of it, that they're going to pay a hundred and eighty-nine or whatever thousand dollars to lift restrictions off a property that the town of Wilmington told them many moons ago, you cannot build on this property. Now their property is extremely valuable. They're saying, which I think it's, was a great move on the towns' part, to get a hundred and eighty-nine thousand out of this, and you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Segal?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to ask the petitioner, how many additional building lots will be garnered by this ease of restrictions?
One. I think I mentioned earlier, Mr. Segal, that it'd be the existing. Both lots will contain, I think one will contain twenty-five thousand, thirty-nine square feet, which is in twenty-five percent over the required in that area, and the other one will contain exactly twenty-five thousand. And the existing auto repair garage in the existing house will be torn down.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're voting to authorize the town manager with the approval of board a selectmen to remove certain restrictions on the described parcel, Article thirty-two, for the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Okay? This requires two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number thirty-one. "To see if the town will vote to authorize a selectmen to enter into an agreement, the terms of which shall be as determined by the selectmen to sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcels, following a determination made by the town manager that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose, and in accordance with Chapter three, section sixteen of the Bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised, and other applicable law. Parcel located on Garfield Avenue, described in the assessor's records as map seven, parcel one-ten, or take any other action related thereto." Ms. Tompkins?
Yes, Sharon Tompkins, sixty-nine Forest Street. Mr. Moderator, I petition exactly as you stated.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Approval Planning Board recommendation. Is approval Town Manager's Declaration of Surplus?
Yes, surplus.
Thank you. Mr. Moynihan, the fair market value that the assessors have determined?
Aye. Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Assessors has determined the fair market value of this parcel to be thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight thousand. And, Ms. Tompkins, do you accept thirty-eight thousand dollars as part of your main, your motion?
I do, but I'm not sure I understand why it is so high.
Okay.
It's a twenty-five foot by about-
I, I just, I just need to make sure that, actually, that there's not a whole lot of choice in this one. I just need to ask you. So, thirty-eight thousand dollars is the amount? Discussion, Ms. Tompkins?
No, I would accept it, but I would like to know how they come up with that.
Mr. Moynihan?
Essentially, at the public hearing, you indicated that you were going to use this land to create a buildable lot adjacent to the land that you have now.
We said that it was a possibility, a far-reaching possibility. At this point, we were trying to square off the land. The land has a lot of ledge and everything else back there, so it's a twenty-five foot by about a hundred and twenty or twenty-five feet, and it jets right through the middle of our property.
Using, using the same, the same logic, though, that this, that this strip of land essentially gives you the ability to create a buildable lot with land that you now own. And, and once again, land in that area, a buildable lot would be about two hundred thousand. This would constitute about nineteen percent of that, so that's how we came up with that figure.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? Yosef? Ms. Tompkins? Yes, sir?
This is Article thirty-one, map, map seven, one, one hundred and ten. I can't seem to, I'm not sure if I can find one hundred and ten. This one right here?
It's that little tiny piece.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. With the, with the lines on it. I didn't see it. Okay, I answered. Okay, bye.
Okay, further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on Article number thirty-one, the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. This requires two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article thirty-one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number thirty-four. "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by voting to rezone from residential sixty to residential twenty the following described parcel of land. A certain parcel of land, together with the buildings thereon, situated at Five Factory Road in Wilmington, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, and being shown as lots forty-six A and forty-six B, and a plan of ninety-four lots of land belonging to New City of Wilmington, on the Boston and Lowell Railroad, belong to Daniel Air and surveyed by J.G. Chase and G.W. Butterfield Engineers. Said plan being recorded in the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds Book of Plans five, plan four, of the southern copies, and being bounded and described as follows, on Factory Street and Manufacturer Street, containing in all, according to said plan, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two square feet. For petitioner's title to lots forty-six A, see deed of Charles C. Clapp to Daniel B. Halliday and Dorothy Halliday dated April twentieth, nineteen seventy-two, and recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds in book two thousand and six, page one oh nine. For petitioner's title to lot forty-six B, see deed of Daniel B. Halliday and Dorothy Halliday dated December twelfth, nineteen eighty-nine, and recorded at the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds at book five zero nine four, page seventy-three. The above referenced parcel is shown as parcel four C and four D on the Town of Wilmington Assessor's map twenty-seven, or do anything in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Halliday?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Peterson?
Attorney Robert Peterson, three fourteen Main Street, representing the petitioners, Daniel B. Halliday, senior, and Daniel B. Halliday, junior. And I would move to see if the town of Wilmington will vote to amend the zoning bylaws and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by voting to rezone from residential sixty to residential twenty the following described parcel of land. And, Mr. Moderator, the description does not read exactly as contained in the booklet. There were a couple of minor housekeeping items relative to the running description of the property for which the town engineer recommended changes and for which I have previously, previously submitted to the moderator, but the parcel itself is the same parcel as referenced in the booklet.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Ladies and gentlemen, the, the changes that Mr. Peterson is referencing are matters of, you know, the percentage of a foot on a plan. It's, it does not alter the description of the parcel that you see before you, so I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Is approval Planning Board recommendation? Approval discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Hallidays have owned this property, which is on, at the corner of Factory Street, Butters Row, and Meadowbrook for thirty-four years. When they purchased it, when Mr. Halliday originally purchased it, it contained six separate deeded parcels of land, all in excess of a half acre. Sometime between eighteen ninety-six, when this plan was recorded, and the current date, the zoning in that area changed from which was the standard zoning of residential ten under our only existing bylaws at the time to residential sixty. There isn't, at the present time, Mr. Moderator, a residential sixty parcel on that lot. Any of you who have the handout that the Hallidays handed out before the meeting, you can see a proposed subdivision of their parcel, which would contain two fully, it creates one additional lot on the land owned by the both of them, containing in excess of twenty thousand square feet. And again, they would be fully conforming R twenty lots. This is the only parcel of land in that area that has not been developed. And all of the parcels that were developed in that area, none of them meet the R sixty requirement. Also, on the handout, Mr. Chairman, if you, if anybody in the audience has it, pages three and four contain condensed versions of the assessor's map showing all of the development in that area. And as you can see, very few, if any, of the parcels meet the R sixty requirements. There were recent, there have been recent subdivisions on Butters Row where the average lot size is half acre. There have been recent subdivisions on Butters Row, where the average lot size is half acre. There's been substantial residential development by two separate developers on Elizabeth Drive and on Seneca Drive in the general vicinity of this parcel. All of these parcels were developed, Mr. Moderator, under the R-20 zone. And the Hallidays would ask this body for the same consideration for development of this parcel, as has existed with all of the abutting parcels over the years. There's not a parcel in this area that meets the R-60 requirement.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? This requires a two-thirds as well. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article 34 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Vote it. We're on Article Number 29. To see if the town will vote to amend and revise Chapter 592, Section 12A, Powers and Duties of the Manager, on Page 43 of the present Town Charter and Bylaws of the Inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington, that reads as follows. Section 12A, Powers and Duties of Manager. He shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, commissions, boards, and offices, except those mentioned in Section 2, 3, and 4, and shall appoint and may subject to the provisions of Chapter 31 of the General Laws where applicable, remove the cemetery commissioners, water commissioners, board of health, board of public welfare, planning board, library trustees, trustees of trust funds, a town collector, a town clerk, a town treasurer, who may also act as town collector, a board of assessors of three members as hereinafter provided, a superintendent of streets, the chief of police, and police officers, the chief and members of the fire department, and such other officers and employees, including school janitors, as may be necessary to carry out the powers and duties imposed upon him or upon the town, either by this act or by other provisions of law. Officers and employees not subject to Chapter 31 of the General Laws shall not be removed by the Town Manager, except on 10 days' notice in writing, setting forth the cause of such removal. Delete the sentence that reads, "He shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, commissions, boards, and offices, except those mentioned in Section 2, 3, and 4," and replace it with, "He shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, commissions, with the exception of the Conservation Commission, boards and officers, except those mentioned in Section 2, 3, and 4, or take any other action related thereto." Is there a motion, Mr. Iacco?
I move that the town be authorized to petition the General Court to enact a special act that would amend the Town Charter by amending Section 12A, Powers and Duties of the Manager, as follows. He shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, commissions, boards, and offices, with the exception of the Conservation Commission, and accept those mentioned in Section 2, 3, and 4. Also, by amending Section 4, Appointments by Selectmen of the Town Charter, by adding Conservation Commission after Town Council.
Thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. What Mr. Iacco has read, which is different from your booklet, is that he is proposing that the town petition the General Court to change the Town Charter, to take the appointing authority of the Conservation Commission from the Town Manager and give that to the Board of Selectmen, is what he's asking. Okay? Any questions? Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation. Disapproval Planning Board Recommendation. Disapproval, discussion, Mr. Iacco.
Why not? I'm not going to ask why they disapprove. The powers and duties of the Town Manager were established July 5, 1950. That's 56 years ago. Page 43 of the present Town Charter and Bylaws of the Inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington. The role of the Town Manager has changed over the last six decades. Went from more of a politician to more of a fiscal manager. There's a lot more people, a lot more money has to be managed. The town is much larger, involves a greater planning, budgeting, and finances. The roles are antiquated and do not ensure a democratic process, as committees are established, such as the Conservation Commission in 1964, which was after the powers and duties of the Town Manager were established. They automatically fall under the Town Manager's jurisdiction. The town residents are not being fairly represented as the appointments are being made, I believe. I believe Mr. Kyra as a Town Manager is doing an exceptional job. However, he's not going to be there forever. Not all of us are not going to be here forever. The proposed article will ensure that qualified conservation candidates are chosen for available commissions, positions by the Board of Selectmen. This would ensure fair representation of the Wilmington residents, because we're the ones that vote the Selectmen in. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Newhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that there's a lot of reasons why Wilmington is a desirable place to live, and by most accounts, we're a successful town. Right at the top of the list, I believe that two of the reasons are because the folks in town, generally speaking, are fiscally conservative, and people who show up to town meeting, you've got to go quite a ways to convince people to spend money, and I think that's one of the reasons why we find ourselves in really good shape. One of the other big reasons why I think we find ourselves in pretty good shape is because we're pretty limited in terms of the political process and the number of positions in town that it can affect. And the Board of Selectmen, at this point, appoints the Town Manager, Town Council, Town Accountant, and then some other ad hoc committees along the way. But those three certainly are three positions which are very involved in the day-to-day needs of the town and operations of the town. And I just respectfully disagree with Mr. Iacco that that process needs any changes. I think it's worked very well for the town for many, many years now, and I'd like to stick with it. Thank you.
Mrs. Deck?
Thank you. With all due respect to the author of this here article, it's very well-written, and I do disagree with this here article. In fact, I don't think the Town Manager has enough power. He should be appointing the Town Council also. Thank you.
Anyone who hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Seeing no one, Mr. Iacco.
I want to respect, I disagree with this lady here. The Town Manager, if you go through and read the article the way it was originally presented in the booklet, he really has power to hire and fire a lot of people in this town on his say. I think that needs to change, because there are a lot of departments, and I think there has to be more of a say on who gets hired and fired, except for the decision of one person. Again, I believe he's doing a great job, but I don't think all those powers should be under one person. Thank you.
Mr. Banda?
Yes. James Banda, 7 Marie Drive. This charter has worked for over 50 years. There's an old saying, "If it's not broken, don't change it." If you are going to change this, and please listen, the Board of Selectmen will appoint. Therefore, anybody who is going to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen is going to carry on the personal agenda of the Board of Selectmen. We have many, many residents in this town with qualified and good expertise to volunteer to sit on these boards. Leave it as it is, and do not change it, please.
Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Chukas.
Yeah, Joanne Chukas, 7 Cedar Street. This has worked. Like Jim said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I have had many discussions with Mr. Kyra. We don't always agree, but he does a darn good job. The system works. He does not work by himself. He does not overrule anyone. He confers with the Selectmen and the other boards before he makes major decisions. No one has that kind of power. So what are we talking about here? The only major issue that has come up on all of these articles has been, for some reason, earmarked the Conservation Commission. Leave it alone. It works. Let's not vote this article in, let's vote it down.
We're ready for the vote? We're on Article Number 29. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? All those in favor of Article 29 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Defeat it. We're on Article Number 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, the sum of $750 each, a total of $1,500, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section 9 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws as amended, the lease of Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse, for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neel Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and B, the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., in Wilmington, for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion, or do any, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Newhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $1,500 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal '07 tax levy and other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the Town Manager for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section 9 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws as amended, the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse, for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Neel Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., in Wilmington, for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation. Is approval, discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Vote it. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the warrant articles that are before you in your warrant. Thank you all very, very much. I know it's been a lengthy town meeting. Thank you all for participating in this process, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Vote it. Have a nice evening, ladies and gentlemen.